Six twenty-nine, call this meeting of the planning and zoning commission to order meeting number eighteen forty-four. We are at the Powell Hall Meeting Room and also on the Zoom platform. We have four regular members. We have a forum. Any added agenda items?
Yes, we have an application twenty twenty-three dash twenty for receipt for a three subdivision. At two sixteen, two twenty-two, South Main Street. And it should create a lot for the Dunkin' Donuts.
Legal notice?
No.
No. This is the public participation portion of this meeting. Is there anybody who has, anybody have anything?
The other added agenda.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. We have Pedro Vega here for an informal discussion. That I.
Okay, back to. Public participation, is anybody have anything in common on that is not on today's agenda or future agendas? Anybody online?
No, sir.
Okay, moving on. Approval minutes? And give me a correction that it's. Typos.
I thought they were very good.
That's good.
Yep, sir.
Okay, that being said, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. Regular meeting eighteen fifty-three, held Tuesday, June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, as presented.
Motion made by Ann is her second.
Second.
Second by Dave, a discussion. Call for vote here now. All favors say aye.
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 Thank you.
Stacy will.
Did you get that, thank?
I'm sorry, Stacy is abstaining. Thank you.
And then moving on to receipt of applications, we received, read it right?
Read it.
Yeah, received one application, PZ twenty twenty-three dash twenty, two sixteen and two twenty-two, South Main Street. Read the subdivision of the nine point six-two acre lot, create a lot, the Dunkin' Donuts Restaurants and associated improvements. Application Bolt Bridge Street Corporation, she only hearing scheduled for July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. And then continue public hearings, both have been tabled. Oh, sorry, sorry, performance bonds, acting permits, bond release request, ENS bonds, East Road, Jesse Lane and Middle Road. Hamlet Homes, Harvest View. Oh, I'm Mark O'Neill.
So we received a letter from Mark O'Neill requesting the release of his ENS farm associated with the Harvest View Estates subdivision. Maybe where Jesse grows, Jesse Lane was just accepted as a camper. And the town engineer had reviewed that. Conditions out there. Also with this request for the ENS bond removal, our CEO, Danielle Hoodo, went out. Inspected the subdivision and is recommending the release. Super memo in your package.
Yep.
And I did. When the town engineer went out there to accept the road, did we look at erosion and sediment control? Yes, he's satisfied? He is satisfied with the property. We don't have a formal memo from him.
So that's why after the end, we always get a letter from Lenny, signed off, and I actually talked to Joe. Earlier this week and he says, okay, but yeah, from now on in the future, we're gonna get a, you know, we always get a letter.
When we do the small ones, it's typically the CEO going out. Except we had a problem with, I'll say, cracking bonds in town.
Yeah.
So that making sure everybody's checked the boxes is important.
Yeah, agree, we get a memo. From that. But yeah, I just talked to Joe this week, so.
Thank you.
He went out, he went out, he's okay.
Okay.
So let me, Dave, anything? Stacy?
No.
Make a motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to release erosion and sedimentation bond established for Harvest View Estates. A twenty-two lot subdivision located on East Road, Jesse Lane and Middle Road. The bond amount to be released to Mark O'Neill of Hamlet Homes is fourteen thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. I make this motion with the understanding that the town engineer has been satisfied as well.
Motion made by Ian, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave, a discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, so getting to the continued public hearing, both of them have been tabled and second one have been withdrawn.
Yep, staff's been working with the applicant provisions. When the last meeting. An application is withdrawn. Like this change to the zoning regulations for section four oh five temporary events. Do you need a motion accepting, or do we need to make a motion accepting the withdrawal, or it's just withdrawal? For the record, making the motion to accept the withdrawal. Do we need a motion to continue? Twenty twenty-three dash seventeen until the meeting on seven twenty-five? You did get the request email for continuance.
That should be good.
Okay.
But as far as the temporary thing. Can't hurt it. Yeah, an anti-motion for withdrawal.
I'll make a motion to accept the withdrawal of the application. PZ twenty twenty-three dash eighteen, which was submitted by the Town of East Windsor. Text amendment for a text change to the zoning regulations for section four oh five temporary events. So accepting that withdrawal.
Motion made by Ian, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave, any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Over here. I can. Yeah, I just think they're here to understand.
Information and the staff handle is typically, it's online. So our intention with the text change really rose to simplify the process of giving permits for special events. And what we were trying to do was alleviate some burdens for entities like churches that have several events a year. Or, and limit larger events to fewer times per year. But then really put the expectations on timeframes for the entities that have to review, whether it's the Health Department, Police Department, Fire Building. So that folks would have some expectations as to what it would take to get a permit. Based on the feedback that we got at the hearing last week or last, last meeting. So we're going down a path that things were gonna become more complicated than they needed to be. And so just didn't seem like it was being productive, so.
So it's back to the way it was.
Back to the business.
Okay, moving on. No new public hearing, no rule of business, no new business, other business. Paul Benson, informal discussion, Pascal Collins. Or George, sir?
Right here. I mean, Paul Benson, Benson Enterprises, we're the builders of Pascal Collins. And. We're in a situation now with the economy and everything else. We presently have, there's eighty-two units at Pascal Collins. Well, I'm probably pretty familiar with it. Detail, we have twelve units. Office, we have thirty-six. Okay, so we got forty-eight units. For residential now, we have thirty-four residential, okay? We'd like to make a change. We're getting more and more difficult to be able to rent office space. You know, it's very common throughout the country, you know, we're not unique. And unfortunately, we presently have a ten percent vacancy rate. On units that are office. We also have two units that are right on Route five. And both of them are, they're shutting down their businesses. And they're taking, selling their buildings. One is going to Florida. The other one is going with his son in the Sofia area to open up a smaller business there. So we, we see changes coming about. And we went through this situation back in two thousand eight and two thousand ten, when we had our recession. Hope we don't have a recession coming now, okay? There's a lot of sound about that and all that. All you people who are not on the board when I did this before. If you don't mind, I'd like to pass out to you so you'll have some reference of how we performed this and how we did it. And when we do them over, if we get permission to do it. We make them accessible and we make them handicap accessible. They're all at ground level. And they just work out great. The, we did two units in one building in two thousand eight-ten and one building in the baby center. Okay, and converted that in two thousand twelve. Very successful. They rented immediately. Anyone with handicap people or handicap child or whatever, they're available. There's nothing out there like that. Unfortunately. And when you get to talk to people, the response was unbelievable, you know, when you put it in the paper. I can pass this out to you. We had, we also worked with. Newspaper book and. Just to give you the process of the permit process, what we gotta go through. It's probably changed now. But still, it's gonna do us the basis of how it was done. And you don't see the complete reason they're. Done.
But the units you converted still resident or did you convert them back already?
No, no, no. They're residential.
Okay, they stayed that way from when you did it.
People are still there.
Okay.
Okay, one handed, that child.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, that was the one that was in two thousand ten. Now that one, it was quite maturity, did that one through with me. This one here was much easier and this was the two thousand twelve, when everything kind of fell apart for daycare and all that. But unfortunately, it hasn't been covered. We're doing a building now, the addition, okay? And that's gonna be for kids to have office, okay, which is gonna be awesome. We're in the process, it should be ready within. I would say three, four weeks. To open up all that. So, which is great. So, this is the. You can see this one here. This one, the daycare above. And then you can see you get the square footage and all that. Came out to be, you know, a beautiful unit, it's got a garage, everything else. I mean, and they're all at ground level. So with a wheelchair and everything else, you can get in with no problems. So you can see the process was kind of, you know, because we were kind of pioneered first to do that. And you have to notify everybody within the area. You have to go through the whole process. It was much easier than the other one, because it was done by the legislature to manage. And I don't know what format is now. I spoke to your new personnel, Daniel, without any conversation, okay? And I will get together with her and see what is the process. And this will surely change. When everything else has changed so far. But we strictly are capable of doing this, okay? And, and once they get converted over, then through the other side.
So, so, so more of the front will stay commercial, like the Aussie past restaurant and all the.
Yeah, the building in the front.
The near styles.
Those all are right on Route five and those have been, you know, strictly for retail.
Yeah.
Okay, and then in the back, you got the deli.
Yeah.
Okay, and you know, she bought that unit, so she's in all of them now, okay?
The more you go to the back, the more quieter it gets, right?
Right, yes, yeah, yeah, a little bit more of a residential, but you still have the dentist in there.
Yeah.
Okay, you still have on the other side, the doctor, okay? You know, he's a, he's a. And then in the front, I hear that that building sold, he's an investor from Springfield, all right?
So.
So that will be a state business. That's not gonna change. Matter of fact, they came in here. To make sure the upstairs was recorded and bring attention. Above that. Right, and that was no, no problem. So we took care of that. The other one.
Bines, part of your development?
Uh, yeah, yeah, she is, leave, she's going to Florida.
So is that one you're planning to make residential?
No, no, that's a, it's already, it's been sold.
Okay.
And it's people that activate these different items out of wood. And that's. So. The front there, right on Route five, you know, twenty-five thousand car count.
Yeah.
So, right away, okay, and then you got residential up. But it's not a bad scene. And then next through the deli, okay? A woman bought that, did it all over, and it's by appointments only. She did a special hairdo and stuff like that. Then the other one, next on the other side, number four. That one there also is another person that does things like that also. He's trying to get her active. So we're, you know, and we still have the hearing aid people. So that's how we get our, you know, commercial unit, okay? And which is great. So we have a good mix, okay? Number seven, that big building was sold, okay? And that's a real experience. Okay, and unfortunately, we went through the situation with COVID nineteen. We had attorneys in here and we had to sit down and talk and we'll work with them, okay? And said, okay, just, just pay the taxes, okay? And we'll take care of the condo fees and everything else to keep them there. We had no choice. Well, they're actually, they shut down all the situations. If you're a trial attorney and they shut down the court, you're done.
Look how planning is only evolves, because thirty years ago, you guys were cutting edge, having, you know, residential with commercial below. That was like cutting edge thing back then.
Right.
Now, thirty years later, the commercial aspect is going away, it's going back.
Right.
It's, things are totally changing.
But the commercial aspect on Route five.
It will stay, yeah, but in the back, it was, it was like, you know, hey, it'd be great, you have your own little business here, you've got residential. You live at your home and your office. And that was a great idea. Now that's, it was like the malls, everything else, it's out of this. Everything's totally changed.
Yeah, things are changing. Very quiet and peaceful.
What is not helping also is our government here has done something which is kind of unique. So you got like thirty-five thousand employees that are the executive part, okay? So thirteen thousand work from home.
Yeah.
Okay, they work from home. And also, okay. They also got, they went to a situation where. They only have to work four days. They went to the union and got it approved. So. Yeah, like schedule. That doesn't help us either. We have some internal. You know, so.
But don't they have to go into work? What, maybe a week?
Everything I read, well, that'd be a five day week. With data like a forty, but maybe I'm wrong, just saying, that doesn't help us or anybody who has, you know, areas. We had, out of the units that want to change. They were the most successful people for doing weddings and meet heads and all that. And they were all. And they were with us for, you know, ten years and the wedding, we know, is. They're much fun.
There's still big weddings.
Yeah, there is. But I mean, it's not like it used to be, you know?
The mediocre person that we used to have.
Right.
There were outdoor venues.
So with pardon, informal goals for most of it, how does the rest commission feel? We're kind of leading towards, you know, if you want to change views or some kind of avenue. I mean, things, things change.
I think it's a reasonable request, long as the front stays.
They're all in the back.
Yeah, I once went to.
No, that's where they are. Right, they're all the way in the back. You know, at that one time, we were gonna do it a whole back. And we already have the wiring in there and everything else. The core of engineers came in and deemed the weapons.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I know, and because we had it where the road went out to the side for the other area and everything else, it would have been perfect. Can't really complain because I'm a core of engineers in here myself.
It's a beautiful development, it's really high spec.
But it's too bad, it would have been nice. So there is the tree farm next door. And they're not planting new trees and I think it's changed. So it might be a time to also, you know, speak to them. That's, that's a nice piece, you know, an addition. Because we're at the end, that's the reason why that road goes up and goes around, you know? Normally, we wouldn't design it like that. Normally, it'd be different because it was going all the way out to the other subdivision, which is all those buildings and commercial. It would have been a nice situation. So if it's available the other way, you know, still, they're doing those apartments over now, they're doing a beautiful job. Yeah, all nice, you know, deep gray color, new roofs, everything else. They're doing a real nice job. If an accident for us, because as we look out from our decks, now you see a beautiful situation.
Want to put in zonias, but we wanna keep you in business, we wanna try to, you know, things evolve and things change. I've changed, we're not the same, you know, we wanna try to move forward and try to find.
Yeah, we're not going anywhere. We got a little piece of property also next to their firehouse. We've been with that for a couple of years now, I was going around with that, you know, in reference to those zoning changes, we'd like to make it all residential. Mixed use. It was okay, but now it's.
The firehouse in warehouse plan or program?
Right in, right across from guys, which is room one forty. Yeah. Christian era.
That was, that's another animal.
Yeah, right, right. And that's the one next door, you know, we're here, we got it approved, they're the ones that do the awesome stuff, okay? For the kids, where I am there, so.
Okay, I think you got your.
Sorry, so I'll work with the town and it's gonna be different now, I know, but I just wanted to give you some bases, you can see how. Intensive rather than that time, you know?
Yeah.
Hopefully, we can look at a little bit easier.
Lovely development. Mike, just looking at it, there's a unit by unit approach that had been taken in the past. To convert portions and keeping a little bit of commercial. If it's a broader plan and we would like to see the commercial aspects.
Be totally residential.
Allowed for that, right? Would it be a modification to the special use permit or would we still be doing them? Unit by unit, not study. How many units do you have right now? You want to believe in that?
Two of the one building and then another one there. Those are the ones that they have. The four units, the people did all the weddings and the DJ's.
Yeah.
So it was their buildings. And that's the only reason why, because they have left.
Yeah.
Wonder if you want to control the stipulation.
One building has a little separate room off the left. Okay, and we can go over this and when I go through the whole thing. You know, if we had have made that commercial or something to get what you're trying to achieve there. That might be another answer.
Probably building by building, it's all a little different.
For everyone.
Yeah.
I never build the same building.
Yeah, I noticed that.
My guys go crazy. They don't like. So.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
All right.
So next on our agenda, it's gonna be another, uh, control discussion with Pedro Vega regarding. Two fifty-seven South Water. Or George, sir?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pedro Vega. I'm, I'm kind of confused where I'm gonna start, so I'm gonna give you a little summary of everything. I live on two fifty-seven South Water Street. I have two houses, I have a house that I started building long ago that I had to take a pause on. And another one that I'm currently occupying in the front. On Friday, I went into the planning office to try to get some information on my permits and the town, the building department tried to get information on my permits. I have a situation where back in two thousand and seven, I signed a letter of agreement contingent with my permits. And I, I made a mistake. I, I was a young guy, I was running a business, I had a family. This committee wasn't here. I, I dealt with some different people and it, it was a long, hard process to get my permits to build my house. I hired every engineer they asked me to. I got drawings right there that I can show you. Long story short, fifteen years later, so I, I don't want to tear my house down. I want to keep my house. Now I appreciate the historical character. It's one of the oldest houses in town. I've lived in it, paid the mortgage on it, the other one's still sitting in the back. So I did sign the letter, it is on the land records. I do realize it's illegally binding document. I'm here trying to see if there's a process or if I can present to you guys ideas on how I can keep the house. The young lady in the town, I believe her name is Danielle, we tried to have a conversation. She didn't want to look at the drawings. She said, I'm just basing my decision on this letter. You don't have enough space. The way I have that drawn up, it does show that I have space for a first cut with two lots. It was drawn by J R Russo. Then I had another engineer work on it. I hired a landscape architect, I hired a wetland person, everyone they asked me to hire. Here I am today. I want to keep the house at two fifty-seven if I could. If I were to knock it down, another question would be is if the.
Can we pull up on the map or no? Do you guys, do you guys know where the house is at? You have no idea?
I don't know where Water Street is, but I'll trip with one of yous on watch.
South, it's, it's South Water for you, right?
Yeah.
So. It's the house way in the back, the big house way in the back, across the Silvermanes exit where they come out.
Okay, yeah.
On that corner.
It's been under construction for a long.
Just because I don't want to mess up the.
Okay.
But it's like it's all blocks in the front.
Correct, exactly. Exactly.
Yes. This is not the, the right picture.
By pass, go to taste. That's South Water Street. Silverman, that house on the corner, that big house in the back.
Yes, contemporary one that's.
He has a house in the front.
Ah, okay, yep, now I know what we're talking about, yep.
So.
So where the park site is, you know, where the warehouse is, there's two houses. And the other front one is the salt box.
That's the house, that's the garage. And then, and then there's a Silverman's exits like right here, across from his house. Sorry, I just wanna make sure nobody knew where.
It's okay. I, I have a drawing right there, if you guys wanna see it. I have the letter of agreement here, I have the zoning permit. I got the email from Miss Danielle, where I asked her a couple of questions and that's kind of where I'm getting a little confused, cause. I don't know if that document is correct, I see a different house on the picture. Yeah, also, it says two acres, uh, my lot, I believe it's two point five nine acres, I had it surveyed by Russo. So that's where I'm getting a little confused. She's telling me I need a certain square footage. I have the square footage, we drew up the plans, it was never recorded because of this and the way that uh. Unfortunately, the process went for me. You know, I had a neighbor who the husband was on a P Z Z, he sat right there, she was on the finance board and. For lack of better terms, they, they, they really gave me a hard time.
So those, those plans showed two several lots and several houses?
Yes.
Where are those ones?
And they were drawn, no exception.
I haven't seen those plans, so this is pulling probably two thousand seven. Um, as we look at the G I S and the property card and the information available to us. Two acres.
So this was done by Mitchell for the first time. They asked me to use Russo, so I used Russo. Here's the, here's the first car without the second house, since it's just the first house. The original issue that I was having was the setback on the corner of the house from the driveway. Um, then I went and hired, they maybe wire a weapons person for this, cause I connected the house to sewer. So he drew up some plans, and then I also had plans from another engineer. That uh, cause that's another.
Another commission, so the weapons.
Correct, and I, and I'm already, I'm already done, I, that construction's finished, I have that permit, you know, that's already done, uh, Danielle referenced it, but. She never gave me the opportunity to explain to her that it was, it was already done. Here's the steward on right here. Here's parts of A, one point nine acres, zero point six nine acres. And then square footage is, so she, she referenced that I needed ninety thousand uh, square feet.
So for a lot. This, this doesn't apply for, sorry, I know.
Okay.
Um, I did a record search, so. When, and I don't know what the issue was, when we looked into that. Cause this is more acreage than what the G I S is telling us, but if you're looking at buildable. Area, so you'd need ninety thousand square feet buildable area, so that's the front lot and then double for the room. Um, it wasn't working out with the two acres and then having all this, you couldn't build on that down to the river, so you'd have to explain. But we weren't working with two acres, I mean, we were working with just two acres, not more than two.
Yeah.
Um.
That gets you over.
Yeah, so we'll have to see. This layout, if this, if this works, right? Um, we don't have these, I don't think they were ever submitted.
No, no, so that was part of the, the problem that I don't wanna resurrect, but I, I tried to explain to Danielle, I said, hey, if you can let me come down there, I'll show you. She says to me, I don't wanna see any drawings, I'm going off the letter, so I kind of cut the phone call short and I just.
So can we get drawings? You guys have gotta review this and kind of, kind of make it work.
Um, compliant and do, you know. I don't know, I've seen, that's what happens when you're looking at something that's.
Yeah.
So.
And um.
They were submitted, they didn't wanna report them, because basically they were holding me hostage for this house. So they, they didn't wanna record them, so I tore this house down, that's where the letter of agreement came up, and I, I was under duress.
This would have needed a special use permit from the planning.
Yeah, so, so we, we could. Follow me, I mean, before don't knock down houses, why we wanna knock down a house that's gonna be an actual.
Well, so.
And that house.
As we're looking at it and the office instead with the information.
Okay.
That's the zoning permit for the, that's here, right? The um. The agreement basically, as I interpreted it, was you couldn't have two houses on one lot. So the town allowed for living in this house while you built this one, and when you get in here, you have ninety days to take this down. So.
So the question is, why you make two lots?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so, if we have the survey.
Yeah.
Um, and it's, it's larger and we can do the assessment of the, the area and.
Yeah. They're knocking out, they're knocking out that old house in eighteen fifty two.
The thing is, the thing is, you know, when I, when we were younger, we had young kids, we were a young family. It was so aggravating that I just said, okay, fine, I'll knock it down. They delayed me a long time, like, if I would've never got delayed, I would've been living in the top right now.
Yeah, I always wondered why.
Contractor and like the guy was talking about the recessions and.
Yeah.
We had some very unfortunate situations happen in our life, which I really don't wanna get into, Jim knows a little bit more, but um, uh, I, I just. It, it, lives happen.
Yeah, no, every time. Gorgeous, yeah.
Yep, beautiful.
Well, we, we, it took, it took us a long time, unfortunately, we lost one of our children and mentally, we were just like, we were ready to give up and. We didn't know, we were just like, maybe we're just gonna leave, and we finally decided, hey, we're, we're gonna stay, we're gonna finish it, we're gonna stay. Like I said, we had the issue over there on the corner, but I'm, I'm, I'm beyond that at this point in my life is where. But I'd like to keep my house. One other thing I'd like to throw to you guys, this, this is the permit from the guy who helped me with the weapon, and this is where it shows that. The lot shows a hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred square feet, the total, the total lot.
Total lot. Okay.
So let's get copies, all stuff for, for we may have, we might start with that. Get copies of all the stuff and then.
Here's the, I'll copy on tomorrow.
Um, can I, can I, I have a little bit of an issue, we have a little bit of an issue. Can I drop him off tomorrow? Uh, cause we, we, we live in East Windsor part time, we live in Puerto Rico part time, I'm working out there now.
Oh, okay.
And uh, my work keeps me pretty busy out there, and we come up here every six weeks, seven weeks, but we're gonna live here, we're not, we're not going anywhere, but. Unfortunately, right now, we're building power infrastructure over there and it takes all of my time, so that's where I am, so um. I can go like back and forth to do electronic format and I can meet you with drawings, but I, I wanted to get these on PDF and I'm leaving on Thursday.
Okay, if you leave them, I can scan them and put them on PDF and get these back to you and email you PDFs.
Oh, cool, okay. Thank you very much for listening, thank you, I really appreciate it, um, I'm not looking for a miracle, I'm not looking for any special favors, I just.
Us to understand, and having this is great.
Now, just another simple question, maybe not so simple, but if this were to happen, would I, would I have an issue with this? Or would this be a special use permit for having it so close to the drive? It's really, the drive is way over here. I have about, I don't know, maybe less than ten feet of one of the host and drive. Would that require a special use permit or? How does that?
The special use permit applies to the fact that it's permitted or allowed.
So come in for it no matter what. It's gonna come no matter what, so, and there might be plants, trees over here, you know, or whatever.
Structures, well, it's already there.
Yeah.
You can't make it more non-conforming, but uh, this.
Like we said, planning, planning is gonna evolve, we're always evolving, we're always changing, we're always, you know, things don't stay the same all the time, so.
And we, I appreciate that, I really.
I have to keep that lot and house.
We, we, we've, we've been offered money for this property, we're not going anywhere, I'm staying, I got told you, I'm not, I'm not going. I love East Windsor, I love Puerto Rico, so we're deciding we're going back and forth.
Perfect.
That's just the way we're gonna, so thank you for listening, I really do appreciate it. That's what kind of work I do after. Yeah, yeah, okay, uh, I got a couple, so I will have double copies in, this one's got the red stamp, I don't know if they match either my originals, and then I've had some with. This is the coffee stand.
If there are, um, my scanner is black and white.
Okay, alright, some are, some of these.
If they're the same and you'd like to hold on to the originals.
Okay.
Figure those out now.
This one, yeah, okay, I'll, I'll leave everything that I can. Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Now, is the your report? Oh, what's your favorite part of the night?
Okay. There's a um, we're gonna reformat the report and just keep.
And then I know, no, I know. And most of the blade is all grass.
So we had some new items that came in that um, in yellow that were closed. Right away, we had um. Seventy four Bridge Street. Let me know, just clearing, and got his permit yet. The um, battle standard, looked as though they were doing some work without permits and, you know, um, wanting to have a bar.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and they're down, um, down in Walgreen. West River Farms, there's flooding coming down the back hills towards the Shank Road. That we've been working on, um, the developer. And then they, there's the berm between West River Farms and Shank Road, um. Is covered with masons. That led to the discussion on who's responsible for what and. The area in question is actually one by itself. Um, but beginning some great progress, um, with the option. Clearing out, he has a plan, he's a, a Springfield facility. But he's really, it says how, he is uh, collecting wood now from travel pit solar, where they're taking them apart. Um, and then ultimately, he's gonna clear, it's gonna take till the end of two thousand twenty four, buddy. Twenty, twenty twenty four, to clear out the parcel in its entirety, but he's going to bring like a. I think a wood burner to get the junky stuff that, that wood is that near.
So there, yeah, so.
Yeah, he has one up and, you know, he needs.
So if he, if he runs it up, we're gonna be in big trouble. But I'm sure that. He relieves, there's so much stuff down there.
There is so much stuff and he is working, but it's like.
He was coming in, nothing goes out.
Yeah, we've been, he's gonna.
Come down my street and come some stuff.
He's got a team on him and Danielle's written the order, but the team is. Uh, planning and zoning, the building official, the fire marshal on him.
So armor for lumber for you guys, I don't be noticing that, behind, behind polches, behind hotcakes, there's a salt home tower. Bunch of wood down there from the top of the salt home tower, all the way down to, to the barn, it's a lot.
Is he running?
So what he does is he, he repurposes wood, hits all tobacco barns, re, you know, reserves the wood and sells it.
Apparently, um, to be sustainable, businesses like Google, um, that have sustainability.
Right.
So.
They buy the old tobacco barn wood at a very high price to build a deck in New York City or whatever.
He's a legal business, right? We're working with him to bring him into compliance with his group site plan. And the building official is working with him to make sure his building is up to code.
Right. So originally, he's supposed to go get a fire truck down there, you ain't getting nothing down there. So it's been, and there's also.
Been a long time, so a lot of it is.
Yeah, so that's, he's got a lot of other issues with, with Phil and. They did dump a lot of stuff to that, and that's like his problem, alright.
So there's a few things, if you're gonna talk about Bill, you know, just further. North from him is where there's a two acre area of Bill. That the uh, remediation plan is being drawn up for um, that area which will. Be sent over to the army for the EPA, they've been kind of waiting in the means for this to be finished. Um, and then the, the part that comes next is gonna be. Figuring out what it costs to actually implement the remediation plan, so I think ultimately, it'll end up in the hands of EPA. Yeah, ultimately, but um, that one is moving, and then we have a couple others. One, the two ninety seven North Road site, there's an L A P will be drilling under it in the area of, oh, Bill. So we can understand what's there and kind of take care of that, yeah. And then um, um, South Main. One forty, South Main in the back, very large, very, Bill, very common occurrence. Um, and so they're at the, the wetland scientist is gonna go out and uh, delineate impact on that.
That's someone's dumb by the river.
Yeah, between, yeah, and so um. Closer to Route Five than, than the river, but in the back there. And so that order was, you get two, you get one. For filling without a permit, and you got one for filling a wetlands, and so wetlands is gonna take the lead.
Yeah.
Um, on the, the approach, the impact, so that. We've got enough of those, right?
Yeah. I see the car suite for.
Oh, she's so successful with that, and there's a few others, uh, in. Two A Toro. They're, they're working on a site plan that'll come before the commission, and then once one forty. Uh, the one with dust settles there, they're not coming to a, a site plan.
What they learn. Tell, tell every one of those guys, they come in for approval, don't park her on the ground, don't, don't, we're not gonna park any cars on the ground. We can athletic for all their acts. Alright, that show, thank you. Alright, business meeting done, no executive session, uh, motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Dave, your second. Second by Stacy, I'll call for a vote, all the favor.
Aye.